So want to make clear this meeting is being recorded. Recording does not constitute the official or or record of this meeting. Uh, okay. Any revisions to the agenda?
No.
Do we? You're voting on that? I forgot, sorry.
On the revision?
Yeah, no, no, good. Uh, will be comment on non agenda items? Seeing seeing any note?
No.
We'll take a uh motion for the approval of minutes from June eleventh. Make that motion.
A second.
All in favor? Aye? Me opposed? Pass unanimously. And you reckon?
There there was one correction to those minutes, sorry. Kara had exited the meeting. So let's just leave that note for next time and approve those. She had exited, I think, after discussion. Oh, from last, yeah, I just taught it yesterday.
Good.
I I will make note of the emotion and that the minutes will be added for next month.
Thanks, Mark. Thanks. For the emission accommodations?
Yes.
Okay. Your report was?
Uh, so I distributed my report. I'll be brief. Um, in Rome, what we're sitting today at three hundred and eighty-one. Yeah, that's where we're sitting. Uh, recruitment, we have one certified hire. That's on agenda for tonight. Still looking for Spanish at the high school, middle school level. And for an additional certified staff at over over elementary, Brittany and I have an interview coming up later this month. How the four away this tax credit dollars, I've already made contact with our biggest donors for the past three years, two of them. And I'll keep the board committed, uh, posted on the commitments as I receive them. We talked about this a lot at the last budget committee meeting, which I'll kind of hit on to when we get to that and agenda, but this money is going to be really important, especially in this year, not knowing what the legislature might do with it. Um, moving forward, but our goal will be to get to five hundred seventy thousand dollars again committed. Um, I put, we talked about it down line of October first, have those donations and forms in hand. Lastly, the surveyors are on site for our housing project. They were on site last week as well as this week. They're digging some test wells in preparing for the building release for lease or rent permit. Implication to Galveston County, I don't anticipate problems.
Yeah.
Give that, but that's what we, that's the first thing we need to do before we need to build increment or anything else. That's that donation for lease or rent.
And then all the additions we made to the campus would be enough still to facilitate something like that, like septic and would tie in or would that be?
Not unfortunately, no, it's not a time in. Um, but there's plenty of room up there. Our hope is, and they're going to let me know within the week or two that we can tie into the existing housing.
Okay.
Because those are all on individual. So for each unit, there's three wells and three septic systems up there already. And they didn't they weren't a hundred percent sure that they overdesigned them enough.
Right.
Uh, but but there's plenty of room for everything else.
Okay.
Um, and then that would be, you know, a decision we'll kind of once district water and sewer gets down in this area for all of the facilities.
Right. Right. Great, thanks, Dustin. Uh, Marlo?
Hi, can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Um, so we're just in summer mode and busy preparing for next school year. Um, we have um, and neither is busy buying our curriculum and our supplies. And finalizing our P I R week for when teachers return in August. Um, and we have Dr. Katie Franklin's going to come and give us a half day workshop to kind of build off of. Um, the research study she did um, last year with our school uh, to help us work with student wellbeing. Sorry, I have a new puppy. Give me a second. I need to relocate him once. Okay, thank you. Um, and then uh just kind of also getting ready for starting the year with expedition. And we have grade twelve going into the Spanish Peaks again, and thanks Seth for being on that team again. Of grade eleven going to Pine Creek and Paradise Valley. Grade ten will go up to Highlight and then grade nine is that red clip. And and student council is already busy preparing for homecoming. So we're getting the parade permit ready to go very shortly. And then I think the last piece, and I'm going to kind of speak for Tim, um, because he can't be here today. Um, and and I'm going to ask Dustin to pop in uh, as well and add his insights. We had really outstanding results um with our I B examinations this um, past May. And so a couple of big things that I'll just highlight um that we have over eighty-five percent of the students earning the full diploma. Um, this really has, and we think that number is going to go up with a correction and some remarks from the I B side. We have um, eighty-three individual tests that were taken that that scored high enough to get some type of college credit. And it kind of depends on the university you're looking at. But it could be anywhere from three quarter credits to twelve credits depending on the course and the standard or higher level. So it's a huge celebration. Over half of our students earned enough points, which is over thirty um, points on the I B exams that they would have sophomore standing at University of Montana or Montana State. Um, so huge benefits from a academic and economic side. Dustin, do you want to pop in at all?
Yeah, I mean, I I I just really kind of, like, this is a big deal. You know, thirteen full I B diplomas, possibly fourteen full I B diplomas coming out of a small school of Montana. I I I I almost tipped over when I saw the results. Honestly, the the strength of this cohort. And Marlo's right, so the two students who didn't get it, we're pretty sure one of them's going to through a remark. The other one missed if I want. Um, the person who got the highest out of this particular cohort was the third highest one ever had. And and really proud of that student. Um, and then I I I'm happy to speak in a non-confidential way about my own kids' results. From past, not with a great score, but you know, has already been working with the Montana State University where he's been attend college. And he's going to be eligible for sixteen credits. That's that's a monster of a school. Um, you know, that his mom and I can spend on something else.
Yeah. On yourself.
Sure. So this was by far probably the whole heart. I'm going to say we were most nervous about or felt like we supported the most or needed the most support and performed probably the best of any cohort. So um it's it's just it's 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 a phenomenal result for this school in its its fourth year of of giving exams, possibly fifth year.
And I think one celebration too is that um, this is the first time we've had students just take one course at a time to take an exam, kind of looking at it like a an A P option. Um, and we're going to just keep encouraging that because it's college credit, they can acc- they can accrue. Every student is um, has the option and ability to do that at our school. There's no one standing in their way to get some college credit finishing up at Lone Peak.
So as you, you know, because there's three people here, four actually, counting myself, who have students who just graduated. You know, when we talk to other parents, you know, some, a lot of the kids are going off to other states, you know, Washington, Oregon. Anything for higher is worth college credit. I know some of them, that's state mandate. So
It's good.
It anything, whatever, whatever, how would you say eighty-six courses that qualify here apparently?
So eighty-three, eighty-three courses, yeah.
Just rough math, you know, it's two hundred and eighty credits.
Yeah.
The credit's two hundred dollars. It's fifty-six thousand.
Yeah.
At least.
That's amazing.
For for experience.
And that was the amazing thing, because even looking at um, at like Oregon State and um one of the, I think it was Western Washington, it was up to twelve, thirteen um, semester credits you could get with certain courses. So huge savings. Huge opportunity. And then it gives them a chance to explore stuff they don't know yet. So I think that's all I have for now. So thank you.
So Marlo, any questions? Uh, so covered D P, anything for activities?
I think you missed, oh, sorry. I'm sorry, Brittany. I was jumping ahead.
Sorry, um. Our summer reading program is going well. We have, uh, it's a new program that we're running this summer and we have Maggie Angel and Christine Toy that are designing and running it. And we have twenty-six kids um, that are showing up on a consistent basis. And um, a lot of really great middle school and high school assistants. One of them sitting here uh, that the kids really love and um, comments from around the community and my old kiddo who's in it are, they're really enjoying it. They love it and they actually want to come, even though it's at school. So that's really exciting. Um, I took a group down to Tahoe in June for some P Y P training approaches to learning, which was really great. We had a wonderful instructor who was a veteran teacher and she's taught twenty-eight years, most of it in P Y P schools. Um, so that was really nice, based on the learning side and just kind of, you know, building rapport with one another. And then like Marlo said, we're thinking about August and planning for those P I R days. Um, and what we're going to do is we return to campus and um welcome a couple of new staff members back and then think about what we're doing to develop programming. Yeah.
Be here before we do it.
It's going.
Don't say that.
Great, thanks, Brittany.
Yeah.
Uh, anything activities?
Just, you know, you've got most fall coaches in line, um, getting all the scheduling ironed out. Most schedules are already out published. And then, you know, fall sports will start August sixteenth.
Are you guys doing anything outside or can you? Like, not technically, or?
We're doing rooms or anything or? Soccer is conditioning every morning at six or six-thirty. Um, structured football practices every evening for Monday, Wednesday, Friday from six to seven-thirty.
Okay.
Um, so we've been doing that. I haven't had from football anyway eighty percent participation.
That's not mandatory.
Yeah, it's not mandatory. You can't make a man. And then I think volleyball is doing some stuff too, am I right?
Almost a few open gyms.
Some, yes. So.
So, thank you. Now move on to the business manager, Corky.
So a couple of things. Um, first of all, fiscal year twenty-four is over. And I think you can see based on the the budget data in your packet, it's probably, it's a good thing. Uh, um, we wrapped up. We wrapped up even. And I would focus on fiscal year twenty-five. Um, how we fund that in the short term is a big issue. We have cash, cash issues for the next three to four months. Um, before we start receiving any type of state aid. And it's November before we receive, you know, local taxpayer dollars. So the next few months from cash, cash uh, standpoint are difficult. Um, but we'll also start focusing on the final budget prep for August, for the August meeting. The only other piece of note is I was contacted by B A Davidson, our bond issuer, that we have exceeded, far exceeded our timeline and bond proceeds interest we've made on the, on our twenty-seven million dollar bond money. So we will have to engage a, an independent audit firm in order to see how much money we owe back to the IRS. Um, but basically, we can't make money on taxpayer money. Or we're limited. So because the, because the project has continued, we still have retained money sitting there to pay to Jackson, et cetera. Um, we will owe the IRS money. Um, sometime, maybe August or September, I'll bring uh, a proposal to the board as to how much it it will cost us from the audit standpoint and a potential, how much it will cost us to pay back. We do have, we still have money, a couple hundred thousand dollars in proceeds sitting in our account. So this is not going to be an impact. This is going to impact the general fund or any type of spending. It's just the proceeds we have from the twenty-seven and a half million dollars.
And so that's just, that's just the interest we're accruing off of that. That's what it's.
So there's a cap on how much interest you can ever accrue more.
Right, and we've gone over.
Well, right, because if you remember procedurally, the bond passed spring of twenty-twenty during the whole, and everything got shut down for a year. So we had, so that money just sat.
Right.
Okay, and then, and we just finished, when we still haven't finished the project, we had our, we have a month walk through two February. So there's those contingencies, that's what Corky's talking about, the two hundred thousand that were still those routine spendings that were still holding back. So we just went over the cap of the interest that you can earn. And it was due to, I bet we're not the only ones in state that happened to pass their bond for the past four five years because of the bonds were without money, so projects could be, that's. It wasn't any community who would be involved. It's just that is what it is.
Right, and remember, it was, we ended up with twenty-seven and a half million dollars of premium. So we've had quite a bit of interest. I mean, we've had close to nine hundred thousand dollars of of interest gain over the last four years, three years, I guess, for the a lot of that, that that allowed us, that allowed us to pay for the roof and the roof repairs. Um, so it's, it's not a bad thing.
Anything else, Corky? Great. All right, thank you. Move on to committee report. Budget Committee.
Yeah, so Corky and I met with Matt earlier in June. Karen wasn't available. Now, we're getting there with fiscal year twenty-five and feel like we're going to be able to bring a budget to the board that has significantly less deficit than last year's budget that we approved. Which is good. Uh, so we'll be meeting again in August and, and you know, what if we finish this fiscal year, I think, three one dollar deposit.
Thousand dollars, yeah.
Thousand dollars, yeah. So we'll have everything chucked out and to the committee. And obviously, the trustee financial report of budget for August, we feel like we're going to, there's still going to be a deficit. But we feel like it's going to be one that's significantly less than that last.
That was worked with for last year. Great. Any questions for the committee? Move on to discussion and action items. Take a motion?
Oh, make a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-five rent structures as presented.
I'll second.
Just the third of the packet, my recommendation is really on the statement. You know, it's one person living alone, it's still about twenty-six, twenty-seven percent of their salary. And then if it's two employees that are together, it's five hundred dollars per month. And then an employee plus the crew significant other is fifteen hundred dollars. Uh, and then on that twenty-seven percent gross gross salary, the math works this way anyway. No less than seven fifty per month and no more than twelve hundred. And we're sorry, we're all heading into the next year. I'll say we did it, we've never raised the rents since we've had those units. And and I'm still going to recommend.
I mean, no reason to, right? Not making money out of this.
Right.
It's not our point. Uh, any questions? I'll call for a vote. All those favor?
Right.
Aye?
Aye.
Any others? Passes unanimously.
Make a motion to approve adoption of form designation to administer application.
I'll second.
So this is the second time that I'm reading this. Recommendation of Fiscal Lords Association to keep this up to date every year.
You know, pretty standard.
Pretty standard.
Call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass unanimously.
Okay, make a motion to approve the Bridger Care lessons as presented for Lone Peak High School and lessons structured for the whole for middle school.
I'll second.
So the Lone Peak High School, and I'm going to have Marlo jump in here, the Lone Peak High School lessons are the same that Bridger Care is doing, that's for the last handful of years. The one change is the, the, the change that are proposing today is the, is the middle school structure. And Marlo, can you speak to a little bit and what those differences are and put it in your, in the packet? Um, kind of versus the broad strokes outline.
Sure. So as we kind of talked about at the last meeting, because Bridger Care has this new um, funding um, where they have to have lessons that are evidence-based instead of evidence-informed. Um, that these lessons have gone through, you know, a rigorous um, testing to make sure that they're meeting the outcomes, um, that they require longer um, a longer time period to kind of execute those lessons. And so as we had talked about, um their recommendation was kind of, we do a rollout where we do the get real curriculum in the middle school, which is nine lessons um, per grade level, and it spirals all three years. And we will embed it with um, the health enhancement class. Uh, but we'll keep the high school the same. Um, what we have been doing is what um, Dustin just said, um, just to make sure we can kind of flush out all the kinks. We are not approving the curriculum at this point. We're just approving the idea of moving forward with nine lessons per grade level in H E. So yes. Yeah. So that was only, it was like two or three lessons for the. It was only two previously. Mm-hmm. Um. How does the administration feel about that much more time being devoted to lessons here at the middle school level? Right. Um, well, there's certainly trade-offs, right? Um, because now they're not uh, in their, their H E class. I guess, um, on the one hand, they have H E four times a week. It's not, it's no longer just a semester course. So um that'll, that'll basically be two weeks over a time period. Um, I haven't been able to dive deeply into the curriculum because I don't have it yet. And I will, I would review it very closely and then make any recommended changes with Bridger Care and then present that curriculum to you guys as well. I did a little bit of research trying to find out if there was an alternative, like provider in the area, and I really couldn't find one, you know, it, the kind of, they have the market right now. Um, so it definitely will be a change and we just have to decide if, if we want if we're okay with that. We can make it work.
Idea because, so we can look at it. That's the general scope. Not necessarily. We're approving the idea of it so we can actually get hands on it.
Yeah, yes, yes. And basically, so I can, we can sign the um, M O U with Bridger Care to kind of move forward. Um, with everything. And then just as a reminder, um, because the evidence-based lessons um have intellectual property tied to them, copyright, um, will only have paper copies available for community members to review. We won't be able to send it out electronically. Hmm. So that's another variable just to consider from a stakeholder perspective.
So the worst word you can say to me is intellectual property. Is there?
So after you, after you review that stuff, though, if you guys wanted to make changes or have things, I mean, can we do that?
Yes, we can.
So we can kind of modify it to
Right, we could.
how we want a little bit.
And if I understand correctly, we can even modify that structure to some extent.
To some extent, but that's kind of, that's where they're moving because all of their funding is dependent on doing these evidence-based lessons. And curriculum.
We have to adhere to it. It's not, to some extent.
Yeah. Yes.
And then, so you'll bring that back to us next time.
I will, I can bring back the actual lessons to you for the next meeting or in September, because we probably wouldn't roll it out till sometime, you know, uh, at past October. So we have plenty of time to kind of vet all the lessons. It's a lot more work on the school side, to be honest. Um, but we can do it. You know, I can do it. It's where we got this.
Great.
So.
Is there a cost associated with this?
Um, the cost, I don't think that it has had, and I don't think the change is that much. And because I haven't officially signed the M O U, I don't have the actual uh, accounting number for it. They have so much funding for it. I think it's kind of like the sliding scale that they've always had. I think their grant was for four million dollars. So.
It's the Bridger, Bridger Kale sliding scale that we're going to get some invoice that we don't know what it is.
No. No. Well, we can ensure that uh, I can certainly bring back the cost for, for August before we, we sign anything. That's not a problem. Thanks for bringing that up, Corky.
Thank you.
So we'd like, till August, maybe?
With the lessons?
Uh, and maybe the, and the financial implications?
Sure. So we don't need to call for a vote on this?
Uh, I think, yeah.
Or just, yes, so we can move forward?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, so I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Right.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass unanimously. Thank you. Are you sorry, Sheldon?
Sure, you can make more than you want. The staff handbook pass presentation.
I second thing. Oh, go ahead.
That's fine, I'll second.
A couple of changes, one of the trustees brought to my attention that I'll make, but just regarding people's names.
Okay.
In list, other than that, it's pretty straightforward. Uh, right? Because we also have to collect. Switch governments, yeah, our staff, so.
Good. Any questions? Call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye? Any opposed? Passing unanimously.
Make a motion to approve Amanda Baker as one F T E service.
I'll second.
Uh, yeah, this is for Oprah Elementary School. Um, I think she's going to be a great fit.
Bosman?
Excellent. Um, are we doing this independently?
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passing unanimously. Yeah.
Make a motion to approve Susan. So, so as one F T E for school year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five family.
I'll second.
So this is a one-year leave of absence coverage. Susan has a degree in economics. Um, and so as soon as you prove this, I'll seek out emergency certification for her.
Okay.
So we shouldn't see anything for our accreditation report. She's sub for us in the past. One of the only reluctance is here is she's such a great guest teacher, um, but it's exciting. She comes to our meetings. She's the lady who's been coming to our meetings the last couple of times, enforcement of E T O.
Yep.
It's really, really, um, she's going to do a great job. So Tim, maybe we can get her to be a couple of more level kind of teacher.
Okay. Uh, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passing unanimously.
Make a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-five bus routes as presented.
I'll second.
I don't think there weren't any changes rather than.
Just like a, no change in like length or routes, really just moved a couple of stops around, just a, just a few, like one or two.
Okay. Great. Uh, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passing unanimously. So it looks like this next one is just discussion?
Yeah, so this is just discussion only. I was forgotten to mention the packet. Uh, then we even have Lizzie, Lizzie from Snow and Canadian, speak to update the board. And let your class process.
Sure. Um, so I'm Lizzie, thanks for the snow. Um, in December and January, with your process of getting the E bus rebate at the E P A, requiring the school district was awarded, um, chosen, I guess, selected is the term they use in end of May. And um, so the school district gets three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars for a rebate for a new E bus. Cost of the E bus is three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Delta there is thirty thousand dollars. Um, I just confirmed with Northwestern Energy and with Harlow's International, the bus company today. The max cost of the charger is seven thousand dollars. So that means we're looking for a maximum forty-two thousand dollar commitment, or sorry, for thirty-seven dollar fast document for the charger plus the delta on the bus. Um, we've done some research and we believe that there are school bus um, serves funds available for this transportation. So we're hopeful that you guys consider it and are here for answering any questions on any specifics you guys have about it. So. Please, we have a team to ask.
Corky, how much do we spend in diesel with the buses a year?
Actually, it's pretty low. We probably spend about seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollars total. Um, my question, it would be, how, what happens? How do we replace this? We have a fund set aside how, that we can, you know, to save, to purchase, to, to purchase new buses. But that fund is based on the purchase price of new buses. So we buy a new bus for a hundred and fifty thousand. We can recoup that money over five to seven years, buy a new bus. We don't have three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to buy a replacement electric bus. So what's our kind of exit strategy? What's our plan if something happens? And I know that we can permissively levy repairs and tax the local residents for, for upkeep and for maintenance, et cetera. But how do we replace it?
That, that will be something that I'll ask. That, that will be something that I'll ask Lizzie and, and I'll go work on to see what other school districts are doing. But it's specifically around depreciation, cause that's what Corky's addressing, is that hundred and fifty thousand, you can depreciate yearly. At a certain percentage, so then when the bus is ready to be replaced or has a hundred thousand miles, we can, we can just go buy a new bus. We have that hundred and fifty thousand dollars, maybe, yeah, cause there's enough school districts in Montana doing it now, I would call to that same guy in Haver. Yep. That you talked to, cause he knows, he knows the inside and outside of how school district budgets work too.
Yep.
And just ask him how are they depreciating that grant money specifically?
Yep.
Um, and then the forty-seven thousand could, you know, be, so, thirty-seven thousand. But we can get that from, but, you know, we'll be careful when we talk about, so about saying reserves, cause it's not really reserved.
Depreciation fund, sorry.
That's the depreciation fund, it's slightly different from just transportation.
Right.
A slightly different, completely different, but, um, figured that, that's where we wanna. We have, that, that would be a good answer, a good question is how do we depreciate bus that when we're giving a three hundred and thirty thousand dollar grant?
We have three, we have two, three bus funds, the depreciation, the reserves, which is there for catastrophic issues and problems. And then we have our normal transportation fund, this will be paid for out of the transportation fund as a permissive levy.
We run two routes, if, if the electric bus comes through, we could use that for that. Um, and then also it could possibly take some of our shorter activity trips, you guys, Yellowstone, Manhattan Christian, possibly even.
Now, what's the range?
Additionally, uh, a hundred and sixty miles, and additionally, with this EPA round of funding. I can look at the map, but I think there's almost six other, seven other schools in our region. That are also going to be getting E-Buses with this, with charging facilities, where we can interchangeably charge at a location.
Return hold, maybe?
So, that's something, I have the map on my phone, I got that today.
Yeah, I know one of the schools is Anderson Elementary, which I know.
And then Buxman as well. So, there's also Long Rock Elementary, Livingston, those men, East Talano, Stanford and Alberton.
So, yes.
Would you talk to the folks at Haver, can you also ask, ask them how it impacted their liability insurance?
Yes.
We were being, in effect, doubling the cost, doubling our. Bus valuation by adding that amount in there, so. And knowing that our liability just jumped up forty, whatever it was, forty thousand dollars, it's, it's a big chunk as far from our budget. So if they have any input on insurance.
Was really clear about sharing all the data he has, so he'll be happy to give it to us, I'll get that to you guys.
If you wanna just rope us all together.
Yeah, just CC you guys all.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Sure.
Thanks, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, yes. Do us all the hard work.
Yeah, thanks. See, that's so pretty.
No, really.
It's thankless.
I'm gonna make the motion to approve the amended alcohol request as given for what?
I'll second.
She had another event coming, at the last meeting, I was specifically asked, does this cover all summer events? So I'll first apologize on behalf of John Zerco, uh, but sometimes, right, this, this particular event wasn't on, it's the. Canyon Women's Club is happening in a pen, um, it meets all of our criteria. So, and we'll say this and now go back to the, this is a lot less one-offs than there were six years ago.
Yeah, I was shocked to see her that they were all in, so I'm not surprised really, but. Uh, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass unanimously.
I want to make a motion. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Any questions, any? Call for a vote, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass unanimously.
I sent out the calendar holder, I think it's thirteen. I have a form for that already. But please respond for that if it happened, uh, cause we'll, we'll put, we have to post that in the newspaper.
No.
And, yeah, that would be the annual budget meeting in court. On the thirteen, same, same time, three thirty-five, with a virtual option. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, bye.